All right, I'd like to call to order the New Canaan Board of Education meeting for February 4th, 2019. First up is to approve the minutes from the January 22nd meeting. Yep, motion, Sherry, second, Hazel, all those in favor? Yep, abstaining. Penny's abstaining. Jen's abstaining, thank you. Next is to review and approve tonight's agenda. Second, Jen, thank you, all those in favor? Great, thank you. Next is comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker, and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who would like to be heard? Okay, great. Next is reports and recognition. The first on the list is the New Canaan Athletics Fields presentation with Mr. Carl.
Good evening.
Hello?
Thanks for letting me on. Okay, thanks for having us on first, appreciate it.
Glad to.
Thanks. This is, so, and thanks for having both Mike and I here this evening to make some comments to the Board of Ed. This is sort of the result of some work that Kevin Moynihan had asked me to do last spring. As all of you know, we have some beautiful new athletic facilities outside here at the high school, between the renovated track and field and the water tower turf field, a new, one and a half new turf fields, and the replaced turf at Dunning a couple of years ago. So, the New Canaan Athletic Foundation had been instrumental in raising the private side of the capital for those projects, and working with the town, Kevin wanted to try to get a level set on where we've been and how to create a path forward that will be sustainable and allow the New Canaan Athletic Foundation to be sort of the private side of capital funding for future athletic-related projects. And since I had worked with Kevin on the New Canaan Community Foundation Board together, and I've done some other nonprofit work in town, he knew that I had nonprofit experience, and I had spent a lot of years on the New Canaan Lacrosse Board and coached in lacrosse. So, I had some background in athletics as well. So, I, last summer, gathered some representatives from every organization in town, every board, commission, panel that I could think of that had anything to do with athletics in New Canaan. And at the beginning, I thought it was pretty easily thing, easy thing to define, but it quickly became apparent, we have so many organizations, boards, and commissions that affect athletics with a lot of great intentions and a lot of volunteer hours that go into it. I mean, the results of our athletic programs over the years speak for themselves, but the bottom line is there was a lot of activity, and surprisingly, not everyone across the board knew what each other was doing. And so, part of the learning from the last six to nine months was to really understand how each of these things evolved and how we got to where we are. And we've tried to really step back and make some very thoughtful planning to move forward in a meaningful way that'll benefit the entire town. So, part of what I'll walk through tonight, I'll do this quick. I, I sent this presentation just before I came to both Dr. Letzey and Brendan Hayes, so that you have it and you can share it with everyone. So, I'll skip through some things probably as I go through this, because I've presented this to the Town Council, the Board of Finance, the Park and Rec Commission, and I tailored a good portion of this specifically to the Board of Ed, because you have a piece of this, and not everyone who's sitting on the board tonight was around 20 years ago when Dunning Stadium came into existence. And a lot of this, a lot of what rests with the Board of Education has to do with how Dunning Stadium was created, and the expectations set forth back then, and what we need to do to look at it today to bring it up to where it should be in 2019. So, with that, we have, as I mentioned, great new facilities that were significant investments made, both public and private resources put into those new turf fields. And one of the things that, for those of us that have been in town a long time, and in 1996, when Dunning was being contemplated, my oldest daughter was in first grade at East School. So, I kind of had no idea how it would evolve over time, but I've sort of witnessed it. And we, when the first, when Dunning was proposed officially in 1997, it was to be the first artificial surface playing field at any high school in the state of Connecticut. So, it was met with a lot of angst and anxiety from every board in town that came across this proposal. It was groundbreaking, it was something brand-new, it was something no one really knew what to expect. And I think history shows that it was an incredible investment on the, on those donors' part to see that that stadium was built and the use that it's gotten. I'll share some things that were stated back then, that's, it's pretty remarkable how it came to fruition. So, the one thing that was talked about back then was creating a mechanism for an endowment that would see to it that the turf would be replaced in the future. All of the boards, including the Board of Education and the Town Council, when, when Dunning Stadium was proposed, at the time it was called the All-Sports, All-Weather Playing Stadium, I believe was the, it was a long acronym. The deal was, from the Board of Ed and the Town Council, that these volunteers could come together and got approval to build the stadium, provided 100% of the funds were privately raised. The town was not going to participate in any way with public funds to build it. And they did raise the money. They cleared about $1.4 million back then to build it. It was built on the site of really two kind of lousy sloped grass playing fields that were used by field hockey, pretty much only field hockey at the time, off the side of the, of the high school, and built into the woods a little bit. And, I mean, we all know where it is today, but the one thing that no visitor to the high school today, I don't, I don't think, if there's 1% of the residents that drive in here would realize that Dunning Stadium has existed for 20 years as sort of an island unto itself. It's been Switzerland. It's not part of the Board of Ed, it's not part of the town. It's existed under the guise of a Dunning Stadium Committee that's been charged with basically 100% of the operating costs of keeping the stadium going, but they don't really have access to 100% of the revenue. They've had to create revenue to support the functioning of the stadium. So, they've had to figure out how to bring in enough revenue to make repairs when needed, to fencing, to maintain the facilities, keep the bathrooms and concession stands updated, the press box updated. Through the All-Sports Booster Club, they've worked with raising money for the scoreboard. Around 2008, the first turf replacement was done with all private money. It's important to note that that was done in like 2007, 2008, when it was about 10 years old. And at that time, we were still in a pretty thriving economic period of time, and it wasn't that difficult to raise a half million dollars to resurface the turf at Dunning. Fast forward another 10 years to 2017, and it was a daunting task. The new reality is it's not that easy to flip a switch and get private donors to step up and contribute to something that they see is already there. And a lot of residents questioned at the time, why is the town doing this? But no one really realized that it's, it was its own charter, kind of. So, Mike Benvento and the New Canaan Athletic Foundation was formed in very short order, probably in less than two months, four to eight weeks, from the time when Jay Egan and the high school staff was notified by insurance that the Dunning Stadium's surface was going to be deemed unplayable over the summer for insurance reasons, because the seams were starting to come apart. They'd have raised about $600,000 of private money, $650,000 of private money, in really short order, to be able to get the turf replaced that summer. And they managed to do it, it was an impressive feat. And then, over the next winter, the town was embarking on, they had earmarked budget money to redo the track and field here at the high school, and spend some money on the water tower turf field. And so, the Athletic Foundation worked with the town and sort of merged together a vision they had of creating that extra one and a half turf fields. And, I mean, we all know that that project kind of merged towards the tail end. There were some bumps in the road, it was no one's fault. Better planning could have alleviated a lot of that, and it will moving forward. But that's how we got to where we are today with the facilities. These were some of the groups that we brought together to have discussions over what we could do to streamline athletics. Some, a couple of you were there, I believe Deona and Tom were there at some of those meetings. And it's all gone together towards creating a public-private partnership, much like the town has done with the Waviney Park Conservancy, related to the, the property, I guess, south of the main driveway through Lapham. They're working to, to build a capital fund to take care of that side of the property. The Athletic Foundation is looking at being the private side of funding for all things related to outdoor athletic facilities in New Canaan, including taking over part of the capital needs of Dunning Stadium. So, that's where the Board of Ed comes into play here. In order to make this public-private partnership work, the Board of Ed's going to have to look back and make some changes to the language that was used 20 years ago to create the Dunning Stadium Island, to incorporate it in a broader sense to all the athletic facilities, and we'll get into that. So, back in 1997, at the same time that Dunning Stadium was being contemplated and they were raising funds for it, the Board of Ed and the Parks Department collaborated on a Town of New Canaan's Field Study Report. It was about a 100-page report that was done by a committee that looked at how the town was taking care of athletic facilities and the athletic complex. And the Board of Ed and the Parks Department reached agreement on certain aspects of it, where the Board of Ed would have responsibility for some of the custodial staff, but the Parks Department was going to add a park superintendent whose sole job was to look after the playing fields and at all the schools and all the town parks in general. So, all through Waviney, Mead Park, Connor Field, plus the fields at all the schools. At the same time, that report created a stadium committee that was to oversee the new all-sports stadium being built. And when we look back, I did some research, I had a couple helpers. We went to, through town records and some stuff at the Historical Society, and here's minutes from the March 20, March 17, 1997 Board of Ed meeting. I made points of a couple meetings, just so you can see what your predecessors talked about back when Dunning was being created. The NCHS Stadium Committee and the NCHS Sports Council at the time, now known as All-Sports Booster Club, presented a plan to install the athletic stadium here. And the plans included, as I mentioned, entirely private funding for the construction of the facility. The Board of Ed members and public commented and asked questions, a lot of support, but there was some skepticism as well. It was moved that night by the Board of Ed to approve the creation of a multi-sport athletic complex at New Canaan High School, and charged the ad hoc committee to move forward with the planning and fundraising necessary to complete the project, blah, blah, blah. So, that was in March of 1997, and as the advertiser reported a couple days later, some of the people that spoke at that meeting were quoted. And among the things they talked about was athletic facilities really elevate the town's standing in terms of real estate values, as people look to move to a town that has great athletic facilities for raising their kids. They talked about the history of New Canaan Athletics and how the stadium would help further that reputation, which, that was Armin Kotein, who was an ABC sports anchor at the time. All that stuff absolutely came to pass. There was a, the same article went on to say that, at the time, they were estimating that artificial turf would have a life between eight and 15 years, with replacement costs estimated at the time in 1997 dollars of $300,000. Vinay Avino, who was the athletic director at the time, anticipated that 90 events could be held annually at the facility, including 23 afternoon games, 20 night games, 32 morning practices, and 15 evening practices. I would guess you could, that many things happen in a week out there today. So, I think it's, as far as what actually was built, and it far exceeded those early expectations. Then in April, a month later, the ad hoc committee presented to the Board of Ed, and they talked about establishing the endowment fund for the projected replacement costs of the surface in 12 years. The, and then July, a couple, like three months later, money had been raised by that point. I think June 30th that year was the deadline for the private funding. They raised the money, and this just said they were starting construction. There were a couple more things in the July 7, 1997 minutes that I thought were worth sharing. The All-Sports Booster Club will be responsible for approval of projection, or actually, it's the, the, A-S-B-C, even though it's the same letters as All-Sports Booster Club, it stood for, it was something to do with the stadium. I don't know, they came up with the same acronym, so it confused me, but. All-Season Stadium, Athletic Stadium Building Committee.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm slow on the draw. I think I left it in here somewhere, so I just can't find it. But anyways, the, the Board of Ed actually, on this committee that was supposed to ultimately look after the endowment, again, this was reported in the advertiser a couple days after that meeting, the, the board that was put together to, to look after replacement costs was to be comprised of the Chairman of the Board of Ed, the First Selectman, the President of the Sports Council, the New Canaan High School Athletic Director, and the, and the New Canaan High School Principal, a financial advisor, and an at-large member from the community. I've got to say, that's one point that honestly, as a resident of town and, you know, longstanding observer of this, it just failed to happen in that regard. It's, it's a great intended paragraph there, but knowing how it's worked for 20 years, I will give kudos to Jay Egan, who's worn multiple hats in this regard. One of his hats, part-time, has been the head of the Dunning Stadium Committee, and he's really, he's been challenged a lot of time, because as athletic director of the high school, he's responsible for all the high school programming. He's got a tremendous program for all sports, and he's done a great job of making sure that each sport has its own amount of time allocated and gets the right amount of field time. But then he has this stadium committee hat on, when he's got to figure out, how do I raise the money to keep this thing afloat and keep it viable? And then the third hat he wears is a member of the Fields Committee, which allocates field time to the other needs in town, all the youth sports organizations, which, over time, over the, over the 20-year period that Dunning has been there, the needs of our local youth sports organizations have grown dramatically. And so, over the last five years in particular, the amount of hours available at Dunning for rental to third parties, like beachside soccer, which brought in a lot of revenue to allow Dunning Stadium to operate independently, with his Fields Committee hat on, Jay had to cede some of those hours to, to local youth sports organizations, which took away revenue from his stadium committee hat. And it just was a really difficult position that he's been in. And so, part of this whole thing is to once and for all streamline this, so that there shouldn't have to be anyone in a position of making compromises or having to choose between one or the other, it should be real easy. We have needs for high school athletics first and foremost. We have needs for town athletics, youth sports organizations, second. But then we have these facilities here that have hours of time, and many times days and weeks during the calendar year, that they're not utilized by either high school or school-related athletics or town-related youth sports. And thus, the idea of creating an athletic enterprise zone, which was talked about in some of these early meetings, but never really came to fruition. We can identify during the course of the year, particularly the period from after high school graduation till early to mid-August, when football starts up, that there's weeks when our facilities are essentially dormant. And the Athletic Foundation has agreed to hire a part-time position that would be responsible for marketing our fields for those times of the year when they're not utilized, to bring in other people's revenue, to help us build that endowment that never, never came to pass over the last 20 years. So, by combining two, two things, the Athletic Foundation is working, we've worked with the town, the Board of Finance, and the Town Council. There's been a, a player-use fee that's been charged through all the youth sports organizations as part of their registration fee. It started at $7.50 around the late 90s, early 2000, and it's, it's gone up to $20. That's been collected by the Parks, or the Recreation Department, by Steve Banco. But it hasn't been collected 100% of the time. It's been a little bit hit or miss, because it's not, it hasn't, it's not his full-time job either. And that money's been used to offset John Howe's maintenance budget for fields. We've gotten the Finance Committee, the Town Board of Finance, and the Town Council to agree that they're going to keep John Howe's budget whole, but instead of having that money directed to an offset account, they've agreed to allow the New Canaan Athletic Foundation to be the collector of that, those funds, and that will fund a lockbox for turf replacement. Once and for all, and the Athletic Foundation's asking the town bodies to set that fee at $25. So, the net result is it would cost registrants of youth sports organizations about $5 more a year. But we've shown the Board of Finance how they've collected, on average, not quite $50,000 a year in offset. So, if over a 10-year period, the town gives up $500,000 of revenue that they were getting, they're making his budget whole. The Athletic Foundation, between collecting that per-player fee and activating the athletic enterprise zone during underused times of, of the year, that'll raise close to $2 million, that'll be in a lockbox for turf replacement. And it's, it's a very conservative estimate, but being a third-party 501(c)(3) nonprofit, there's a lot, it's easier for them to be transparent, it's easier to earmark the money, it's more palatable to parents of kids that I've spoken with and Mike's spoken with, that people will be happy to pay that as part of their registration fee, if they know where it's going, as opposed to a black hole going back into town someplace. So, we believe that, once and for all, there'll be replacement costs available in 10 years that haven't, haven't been in the past. There's, this is a document, a Board of Ed document, which I honestly can't identify, because I don't have the cover of it, but. because I don't have the cover of it, but if, if anyone can figure out what document this comes from.
There are policies.
Okay, policies, all right. So, this is one of the things that would need to get looked at in terms of revising some language. It talks about the All Sports Stadium shall be governed by a Board of Education-appointed Stadium Committee, ba-ba-ba-ba. And when you look at this, so much of this work was really well-done and really well-intended. It just, it got layered on top of things that other people were, were really struggling to do their, their day job, and this was an extra thing. So, the approval process and how athletic events will be staged and how they'll be prioritized in town will not change at all as this goes through. The Fields Committee that exists today and should be hardcoded into, into understanding from everyone should be the New Canaan High School Athletic Director, the head of the Parks Department, and head of the Recreation Department, which today, as we know it, is Jay Egan, Steve Banco, and John Howe. Those three individuals in those positions are in the best position to understand the needs of town and to listen to feedback, and they meet before each season to have that, each youth sports organization comes in and reports their enrollment, their needs for the season, and they do a great job of allocating time based on enrollments and needs, allocating practice time. So, that's not going to change, and the board, the, the school events will always take precedence over everything else. The thing that's changed, or it's proposed to be changed, is the hiring of a, like-
Executive Director.
An executive director, I'll say, of the Athletic Foundation, who's, who would sit with the Fields Committee, not as a voting member, just to know, get a pulse of when all the events are happening, identify the, the lulls, and then be able to generate extra income for the town, not taxpayer dollars. This is money that would come prioritized first and foremost from New Canaan-based coaches, mostly high school coaches that run other after-school activities. I mean, the one thing that we can do in town to help maintain or retain our great coaching staff is to give them opportunities to be able to take their talents and, and make a little extra money. And if we, if they can run camps here in town and bring in money from athletes around the area, that's extra money that we're bringing into New Canaan that wouldn't otherwise come here. Why let them go rent space at Chelsea Peers or at Sonoma Field House or any other field when they could do it right here and keep that money in town, and it will, it'll help the entire thing work smoothly. There was, I think in February of 1998 was the final sort of Board of Ed sign-off after the, after the stadium was built, and that had to do with that section that I just read. So, we already talked about athletic enterprise zone, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna breeze through some of this because if anyone has any specific questions, feel free to ask. But again, the idea of an athletic enterprise zone is we have these awesome facilities that are underutilized or not utilized on some days of the year, and there's an opportunity to bring in, for instance, on some of those weekends in late June through July, most of you that have had kids play sports have gone to tournaments out of the area where they have a bunch of teams, 20, 30, 40 teams come in and play, whether it's soccer, lacrosse, field hockey. There's no reason that we can't have one or two of those here in New Canaan and, and bring in some revenue off-season. The Athletic Foundation, as I said, has applied for a full 501(c)(3) status. They're still waiting the official word from the IRS, but they have papers back from the state. They've got a functioning board they've reconstituted, which has really done a good job of, of becoming more streamlined and focused on the task at hand. It's envisioned they would hold three accounts, an operating account for day-to-day operations, and event management, and then a lockbox account that will be for the sole purpose of collecting funds for the, the known eventual replacement of turf at, at Dunning Stadium and on the Water Tower turf fields. The thought is to keep that lockbox account invested with the New Canaan Community Foundation in a fund that the public would see grow over time. It would earn some investment return, and it would be very visible and transparent to all. And then a third account, which would be a capital projects account, which would help the Athletic Foundation channel new projects related to cap, capital improvements in, in athletic facilities. One of the main goals of the Athletic Foundation, one of the first tasks to work with the town is to create a master plan for athletic facilities, which will envision things that might be prioritized over the next, say, five years. And the Board of Finance loves it because they'll have some visibility ahead of time for what's coming and can potentially plan better for it. There might be capital campaigns around that the Athletic Foundation would do around raising more money for an enhancement at Dunning. That's probably the next thing, maybe an enhancement to Dunning Stadium where the, as ideas, the concession stand could be redone, so it could be accessible to inside the stadium and outside, so when there's events at the Water Tower turf fields or at the tennis courts or at the track, there could be concessions available for those events. Same thing with bathroom facilities. Those could be expanded so they could be inside and out. The press box, there's a lot more filming that's on a game, so some things around that technology-wise. But any athletic facility capital project would channel through this process that the, the Athletic Foundation will have with the town. If you think back over past history, most things that have happened in New Canaan are the result of some volunteers getting together with a vision of what they want to do. They create like a little ad hoc committee, and they start going, knocking on doors from each board in town and sort of recreating the wheel each time. If this public-private partnership is structured correctly, as I think it will be, it should allow a gateway that all athletic-related projects flow through, and the Athletic Foundation will know, you know, the process of which boards go first or who's, who's involved with, with what, and the town will have visibility on budgeting and planning. So, the, the Selectman, the Board of Finance, Town Council, Parks and Rec, and the Board of Ed, all have little pieces of language that needs to be looked at and addressed to sort of make this all come together. And I think at the end of the day, it's, it's a total win-win-win for everyone involved. It'll take some burden off of the Board of Ed from having to think about, is that stadium committee operating the way that it was originally set up 20 years ago? You know, what do we need to be doing? Same thing with the town. It gives private donors the knowledge that if they want to contribute towards, specifically towards athletic facility improvements, they can do it through the Athletic Foundation, New Canaan Athletic Foundation, and it will really help solidify our, New Canaan's reputation as a great place to raise kids and play sports, so. Mike, do you want to add anything?
No, the only thing I would add is, I, I think I came here two, three years ago when we first started the Athletic Foundation, and it was probably post the summer that we quickly raised the money to resurface Dunning, and then came together and had ideas about the larger plan that would take place, and, and I, I told everybody what our vision was, why we were started, why I took the task to do it, given some prior experience I had, and, and quite frankly, some peers and Darianne, and, and having seen what they had done and what they accomplished, and some of the mistakes that they made along the way, and felt like we could do that and maybe do it a little bit better. And that was really the genesis of, of how the Athletic Foundation came together. And then obviously, we went through the big project, we learned a bunch of stuff from that, and, and then between Leo and Kevin over the summer saying, okay, let's take everything that we've learned, and really, we've peeled back an onion here, and there's many, many layers that certainly I was unaware of when, when we first undertook some of this stuff, and, and, and we all came to an agreement that everybody needed to come together and, and attack this in a more, in a broader scope. And in conjunction with that, the Athletic Foundation was also, as Leo pointed out, the, the board was reconstituted. We had been an ad hoc board that kind of came together because we had passionate people, but there, there were about 25 passionate people, and there were lots of bodies in the room pulling in different directions, and, and so, between the learnings that we had from Leo's white paper and the study of everybody in the room, and then having our organization get a little bit more formal in terms of our 501(c)(3) process, slimming down the board to 11 members with different term limits on, on their board representation, working board jobs, and then the hiring of the, the executive director, I think that we are in a much, much better place from an institutional infrastructure standpoint, and I have full confidence that once we get through this public-private partnership document, once we have that institutional infrastructure in place with the 11 members of my board that are there, there will be a time, hopefully in the near future, that I can step away from this. And there are other people, because I've seen it in other organizations, youth organizations in town, if you put the right infrastructure in place, it should live well beyond your years, and, and that was, that is the goal of the Athletic Foundation. I will, I've been in town for 16 years, I'm not going anywhere, but my kids will get older, and, and somebody else should be doing this year after year after year, and, and that's the way that the board has been set up. I, I made a, a promise and a commitment to everybody that we weren't starting the Athletic Foundation to do one project and walk away. And I feel more confident than ever now, knowing what we've done over the last nine months, knowing the work that, that Leo has done with Jay, with Steve Banco, with Kevin, and everybody, the Town Council, and Steve Carl, and John Angle, that we are in a place that we are very, very close to actually having that vision solidified in, in a professional, foundational type of place, that I know that many years when we're all gone, that the Athletic Foundation will be in a good place, that, that it will be able to live on and do great things for the town from, from a facilities, athletic facilities, infrastructure place. I got involved in this because education is a passion of mine, athletics are a passion of mine, I think they go step by step in a lot of ways, and when you roll into any one of the schools in New Canaan, and certainly the high school, we have the luxury, and I've said it over and over again, especially to my friends and Darianne, that we have the luxury of a campus here. You know, they stuffed a couple of turf fields into a parking lot, as far as I'm concerned. We have, I mean, we have a beautiful facility here, and, and people don't know that the right side of the building is Parks and Rec, the left side of the building is Board of Ed, the backside of the building is this Dunning Stadium sitting in Vienna. I think we're getting all of that straight. What everybody knows is when you roll into New Canaan High School, between the, the actual building itself and the athletic facilities on that campus, you're wowed. And I think we can make it even better, and that's really the whole purpose of, of the Athletic Foundation.
Thank you.
Any specific questions you can answer, or any questions?
First, I just wanted to say thank you for all the work you've done. I know it's been a lot of heavy lifting on both of your parts and getting a lot of people coordinated, so, you know, if we can get this all, you know, worked out to everybody's, you know, desires, I think it's a great opportunity for the town. I do have a couple questions, and I had the questions for a while. In the public, in the partnership document, on the membership, sorry, every time I don't look at this for a while, it blacks out on me, so I just need to get back. So, in that document, it talks about membership, the ex officio membership of the public partnership, and I'd, I'd just like to express my concern that there isn't a member, particularly probably the Athletic Director. I noticed that the superintendent was in that document initially and then was removed, so I think that there needs to be board representation by, by the Board of Ed. I mean, I know, you know, there was a couple quotes that I wrote down just because I wanted to sort of emphasize. You know, you talked about, you know, that we would only be using it in unused or underused times of the year. The way you know that they're unused and underused is if you are, have somebody from the schools on that board. And then, you know, the fact that you said schools will take precedence, the way we know that the schools will take precedence is that there's a member of the school board, you know, I mean, of the school administration on that board in an ex officio capacity, because as much as we all like to say, kind of like, you know, we're going to talk, we're going to do things, people get busy, things get hurried, and, you know, you really do need the people on the ground every day, understanding what's going on, to be able to make those decisions in real time, and, and I think, you know, when pressures come to bear on fundraising, our priority as a Board of Ed is that the schools take precedence on those fields for school-based events, and so, I just want to make, the way that happens is we have represented.
But I think there, so two things, those are really good points. The document that's, you may have a copy of-
Yes.
Public-private partnership document.
Yes.
It's still a living, breathing, total draft, and it may have changed since any copy that you may have, but it-
This is just what came from today's presentation.
We're endeavoring to the best of our ability to get this pulled together in a final form here in the next couple of weeks, because it's got to get before the other boards. But that's good feedback.
Okay.
I think one of the, one of the things, I will just chime in and say, when you look back, you know, 20 years ago, and you look at that committee that was put together, it sounds great to have the titles on those committees, but the reality is they all have big jobs that have a lot of, they already go to a lot of meetings, and the question is, do they want to be the ones going to whatever meetings there are about this specific thing? So, to that degree, it makes total sense to have them named.
I actually think also it, it could make sense to just outline it in the document what the priorities are in terms of-
Okay.
-usage of the fields, just so it's, you know, right there for everybody to see.
Just one other thing that I would add, because we did put a lot of thought into this, and it's important for you all to know because the executive director has been hired, and that person, while they are a 1099 employee of the Athletic Foundation, is a teacher in the school and a coach in the system. So, they have a lot of institutional knowledge of what's happening out in those fields, in the classrooms, and, and again, while they're a 1099 employees of the Athletic Foundation, we thought hard about what does that executive director-type person look like and what's important, and obviously, knowing what's happening on a day-to-day basis, boots on the ground, were important in the job description.
Great. Penny?
I have to say, I think this is wonderful to formalize it and to, the people in this town have stepped up twice to replace those. And sort of kept the, to the original agreement. Sorry, not agreeing, thank you. I think it's wonderful you've done it, and I appreciate everything people put into it. The one thing that did really jump out at me was the composition of the committee, and I, I think that, you know, the Board of Ed will always be able, their superintendent will always be able to designate somebody who, at a high enough level, that they can look out for the interest of the school district and work in partnership with the people that are doing the, the heavy lifting. And so, I think having one, somebody that the superintendent designated, superintendent or somebody that the superintendent designates, you know, as the representative on the committee in the document, is, is very important. I think that will give a lot of, you know, just, I think that's good, I think people in the town will know that the Board of Ed is on board, you know, with the, the document and, and participating, and that'll, and that'll sort of just round it all out, and I think prevent any, you know, hopefully prevent misunderstandings, and just pass information, you know, more quickly. So, I would, I would be very much in favor of that addition.
Other questions? Katrina?
I would just echo what everyone else had to say about the thanks to you all for your great work as a family with many end-users of the fields. I have to say, we've enjoyed them thoroughly, and they're beautiful fields, and it feels good to be part of a community that has that to offer. My question is, knowing the demand is there for the fields year-round, well, in the school year, with all the sports, you mentioned the rental fees, and I'm just wondering, would it be a goal of the Foundation to raise the funds to support, for example, Dunning? it be a goal of the foundation to raise the funds to support, for example, Dunning during the year so that the rental, we don't have to rent it during the year to outsiders and where, when we have sports organizations who would happily use it?
Well, so there's not going to be, if, if the language is, is changed sufficient to the point where there is no more island of Dunning Stadium, working with all the town bodies, the, the plan as it exists right now is that the Parks Department will take over the, the maintenance inside the fences of Dunning in terms of the grass and stuff. The, the town will take over the maintenance, the day-to-day maintenance. The Athletic Foundation will still maintain the, the private funding of capital projects. And one important thing to note in this, while there's not, in the public-private partnership, there's not a, and I, as a taxpayer, I feel really strongly about this. I kind of feel, and as someone who's supported athletics for a lot of years, I've, I've kind of felt like athletics has gotten the backseat to everything else in town in that everything that's happened outdoors with athletics in New Canaan has been the responsibility of private donors, basically, from as far back as I know. And when you think of all the great building projects that the, the Board of Ed has undertaken and the town has taken on, we've improved every aspect of school life from K through 12 in town, but the athletic facilities have been left to private funding when needed. This is a watershed moment for me, because the town governing bodies have all acknowledged that they should be participating with public funds in, in the maintenance and upkeep of our athletic facilities. And even to the point where they've agreed that they should be participating in the turf replacement costs to, and so, one of the things that will be spelled out in the public-private partnership, and the only thing that'll be hardcoded, as it stands right now, I believe the split's going to be 60-40, 60% town responsibility, 40% private responsibility for turf, for future turf replacement. Any other project that comes along, say there's a million-dollar renovation to Dunning, just using that as an example, there's no hard and fast rule. It could be a million dollars is privately raised, it could be split 50-50, it's going to be a per-project basis, but because the town's Board of Finance and all the other bodies will have visibility into what those projects are and when they're going to happen prioritization-wise, they'll be the opportunity to partner with, with the town on those, on those projects. So, I think it will only enhance facilities moving forward.
And I would just say two things, Katrina, from my standpoint, and, you know, we, we wrote a pretty thorough business plan as it comes, as it, as it, you know, as it pertains to the athletic enterprise zone with a, a budget. I think from the middle of August to the middle of June, what you see happening out there now is not going to be dramatically different, if at all. And so I think what we're really talking about and where the majority of, of this business plan generates its revenues from is from that June 15th to August 15th period when, you know, from a youth sports standpoint, from a high school or town athletic standpoint, those fields aren't really being used. And that was the, that was the real opportunity that we were looking to seize to raise money. So, I don't think we're talking at all about bumping anybody, and, and to your point, Deanna, about prioritizing the, the usage, certainly that's not the Athletics Foundation's, you know, we're not here to run a business and make money, we're here just to raise some money to give it back to the town. And so I, I think from our standpoint, you won't see a big difference from that middle of August to middle of June period. It's really just capitalizing on that, that two-month kind of dead period. The, the only other thing I was going to say, well, you make your point, because I wanted to...
There's like, I'll give an example, we, last spring, we had a college men's lacrosse game between Vermont and Virginia here. That was a great success. That brought in enough revenue basically to give breathing room to the Dunning Stadium Committee to pay their bills for the year. So, an event, a single event like that may happen, but there, there will no longer be pressure to rent hours at Dunning to third, outside third parties, because we've got a sustainable plan. If you go back to those notes from 20 years ago, the theory was that youth sports organizations from Pop Warner Football to New Canaan Lacrosse were going to pay a rental fee to the Dunning Stadium Committee for using that stadium. They never did, because they were paying a per-player fee to the town. And parents don't want to hear that they've got to pay here and, you know, all these different places. So, it's, the, the big gist of this whole thing with, with specifically regarding Dunning is to take the shackles off and make sure that there's no handcuffs put on, forcing things in there that shouldn't be. It should be, the priorities should be set just like they are for all the other fields, so.
The, the point that I was going to make, and, and Leo mentioned it, but I, but I think it's important, because it's certainly come out of the learnings that we had over the last three years, was the concept of the master plan. And as we revamp and will roll out a new website, you, you'll see there's an area in that website that's asking for suggestions. What, what do our constituents want to see? What would they like to see as enhancements? It doesn't need to be 11 people sitting in a room deciding that we need a new upgrade of Dunning Stadium or a new varsity baseball field or, you know, everybody has, has their opinions and, and where they would like to donate their money. They're your constituents also. I think that having that master plan and having the ability to work in conjunction and lockstep with the town and be able to, to work towards a five-year plan, so everybody knows where we are in terms of where we're going and, and what our constituents would like to see done, is, is only going to make things work smoother. I know from Darien's standpoint, where their Athletic Foundation tripped themselves up a bit, was they were never in lockstep with their town representatives. And at times that created friction more than, you know, towards what they wanted to get done. And I think that from the very beginning, that was the Athletic Foundation's, you know, commitment and, and intention was to work in conjunction with all of the town bodies to make sure that we didn't have that friction. I think this concept of a master plan and getting feedback from the town and the people that are going to make those donations is important, because it'll just make things work smoother as we work towards that, that plan.
Tom?
Leo, you mentioned that it's still a work in progress. Do you have an idea of when you'll get close to, to definitive language?
I would say in the next week or two, at the most.
I, I would say, th, these are, these are good inputs and they're important inputs. We've gotten input on multiple meetings that we've been to at Town Council, Board of Finance, Selectmen, Parks and Rec. This document, which is...
Mike's paid too many legal fees.
Redlined multiple times and, you know, putting more money into Rucci's pocket, is in a good place, I think. And, and in fact, I spoke with Kevin this morning, we both think it's in a good place. But again, it's still in draft form, but I think we're trying to work towards getting it signed.
And I tell you why I, I ask. We have a policy here in front of us that addresses the all-weather athletic stadium. So, any, any change to that policy would require a board vote. So, we want to put that on the schedule.
Yep. I'm not thinking that you're going to vote on anything tonight, because I realize, we've, we've learned one thing about town procedures, it's like, listen to something, debate internally, yeah, think about it, then vote.
I think it's the next step.
But, so, so by the time, we, we will make sure that you get the draft. And well, I've written down all the comments and, you know, some of it, maybe just adding another section in there to add language that's someplace else. I think the, the more it becomes a freestanding document that anyone can pick up and understand the purpose and how it operates, the point of this is to make this last beyond the folks that are involved in putting it together today, so that it's transferable to future boards and easy to understand.
Yeah, I think what we can do is consolidate, you know, all of our comments and probably get you a, a further markup of the marked-up document. Just one other comment that I had, which is, which we can reflect in our comments is, is regulations on use. So, you know, I, I don't expect any problems, but things like alcohol, tobacco, things like, things like that, that we have in our policies in terms of what, you know, can't be done in school property, those are sorts of things that we, you know, want adopted, obviously.
Yeah.
So, the, the policy itself could certainly be discussed at an upcoming governance meeting, but the board wouldn't, I don't think would take action until your paperwork was complete and, you know, you had something to, to replace that policy with. Because essentially, when there's a change that, of this nature, it's, one policy is rescinded and another policy is approved in its place. So, because this way we're not operating in the absence of a policy around us. So, on your timeline, when that's ready to, when it's in, what you consider final form, we can have that discussion with the Governance Committee and have another discussion here as a board.
One of the goals that I had, at least for myself, coming before you tonight, was to let you see some of the, I think there's multiple places that resolutions were passed, and I'm not sure if it's all, if it all got concisely put into, you know, policies and procedures book or whatever, but I leave that to you, looking at all the data. Because we don't necessarily know what, what specific things you need to change, we're just trying to point out the things that we'd like to see changed along with this. But I, I understand why you need the, the final draft of the public-private partnership, so.
Sure.
That makes sense.
Thank you very much.
I just, I, I, this might just be drafting too, but in the part of the provision where it talks about exclusive license and the NCAF being able to set user fees, use fees, I think we...
That's got to be done by the town. That's already, that...
All right. Well, I would just say that I just would want it clear in this document that those would be for non-New Canaan public school teams. So, in other words, we're not a pay-for-play school. I mean, actually, most of the students that play on private team, you know, school teams actually end up having some expenses, but we're not pay-to-play. And that would be a huge policy shift for this board. And so I wouldn't, I would want to make certain of that. I think you could do it by just adding the word "non-New Canaan public school" before that word "teams" in, in paragraph two. I think that's the intent. I, I just didn't think it was crystal clear, and so, since these documents get passed down to other people who might look at them creatively in the future, I wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, that's great. Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Next up is the Saks Technology Update with Mr. Salvastrelli and team.
I'm just going to introduce everyone as we're switching over to the presentations. Mary, I know you got excited with those primary sources in the last presentation. That was very, I know, I saw the eyes light up, you were very excited.
It's a, it's a New Canaan education putting that together, right, Leo?
Yeah.
But anyway, we're very pleased this evening to introduce Mr. Salvastrelli, who will be leading the presentation this evening, along with the four coordinators, Sarah Broas, who is our K, our five-through-eight English Language Arts Coordinator, Mary Hannah, who's our K-through-eight, Social Studies Coordinator, Melinda Meyer, who's our K-through-eight, Science Coordinator, and Zoe Robinson, who is our K-through-eight Math Coordinator. So, tonight, we're hoping to share with you how we're utilizing all of the technology over at Saks that was purchased just about a year ago for the Chromebooks in the English Language Arts and the Social Studies area. So, I'm going to give it over to Matt and let the team take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Karanti. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for providing us with the opportunity to give you an update on how technology is being used in integrated instruction at Saks. Before I begin, I'd like to take a, a moment to thank a few people for taking the time to be here to show their support. We have present here, sitting behind me, several English Language Arts teachers from Saks, as well as Saks administrators. In addition, I'd like to recognize two people who unfortunately were not be able to be here this evening due to extenuating circumstances, and those are the technology integrators at Saks, George Petracopoulos and Jen Pesseli. They were instrumental members of the preparation of this presentation, and as you'll see, they are, they are key members of the collaboration and planning team to help plan out this instruction. The process that we'll share with you tonight is a reflection of hard work and dedication of those that you see this evening, as well as all of the teams of teachers involved at Saks, grades five through eight. So, thank you all. Also, before I begin, I'd like to thank you, the board, for your instructional vision, as well as your commitment to providing us with the best possible technology tools that allow us to elevate how we teach our students and to ensure that they are prepared to meet the challenges of an ever-changing society. Shortly, we hear from the curriculum coordinators and see some examples of how students are engaged in truly authentic experiences that incorporate technology into the learning process. What we'll share with you are just a few examples that reflect a cyclical process of planning, instruction, and reflection that involves the collective contributions of all Saks instructional stakeholders. We'd like to start with the board goals, since these are the instructional priorities that drive our work. The goal that links directly to this work focuses on ensuring that students graduate with the technical skills and knowledge needed to be successful in today's, today's society. Critical thinking, communication, problem-solving, utilizing technology productively, and being responsible digital citizens are just a few examples of this goal. To achieve this, we start with the instructional priorities, the standards, and work together to identify the digital resources that are best suited to support the learning. As a part of this, technology integrators work to provide professional learning opportunities for teachers and staff in real time, and in, and this learning is also grounded in instruction. Our instructional objective is to, is to support deep learning for students. This term, used by Michael Fulon, means quality learning that sticks with you for the rest of your life and engages or changes the world. To do this, there are three strands of expertise that teachers need to weave together. First, pedagogical partnerships. Teachers need to utilize proven instructional practices, for example, providing students with specific and timely feedback, or clearly establishing student expectations, but using them in creative and innovative ways, where they're carefully scaffolded to support student learning. Next, teachers must provide learning environments for students that are engaging, that are efficient, where technology is ubiquitous and steeped in real-life problem-solving. And lastly, leveraging digital. And by this, we mean that we are looking to use technology as a learning accelerant. How does technology amplify the learning experiences for students, not just add to it? This can be through providing students with opportunities for efficiencies in learning, as well as opening up new venues for communication and collaboration, just to name a few. An example that Sarah will share with you in just a few moments, students are tasked with deciding how to best utilize technology to effectively convey their message to a designated audience. With all of these priorities in mind, I want to highlight the process that we follow when planning these instructional experiences for students. At the center is a cyclical process of aligning the work with the standards. We start with the core curricular standards and identify how we can support students' achievement of these standards by leveraging technology. The work begins with the TIs carefully reviewing units of study, ensuring they have a clear vision of the instructional priorities. They then sit down with the curriculum coordinators to ensure that there are instruct, there is instructional alignment and to discuss opportunities for leveraging digital resources. Based on this collaboration, TIs meet with grade-level teams to take a deep dive into the unit of study to further develop opportunities for integration. Here, they focus on fleshing out the instructional plan, the timeline, feedback opportunities, as well as any other professional learning needs for teachers. TIs collaborate with teachers to identify where they will need to differentiate their involvement based on teacher and student needs. The third stage of the cycle is supporting the implementation of the instructional plan. TIs or teachers can take on the role of instructional lead or co-teacher, or to provide differentiated support based on the needs that were identified earlier in the process. Similar to our instructional focus for students, TIs focus on varying and scaffolding their support for teachers. Their goal ultimately, of course, is to increase teacher... Their goal ultimately, of course, is to increase teachers' comfort and capacity to infuse technology into learning experience. And lastly, on this slide, I'd like to emphasize that what woven throughout this process is the collaborative communication between teachers, technology integrators, and curriculum Diving one step further into this process, I'd like to focus on how our technology integrators approach that first stage that I described just in the previous slide. They utilize this model called T-PAC. It emphasizes three spheres of knowledge: content knowledge, pedagogical knowledge, and technical knowledge. Truly effective teaching, the center of that diagram, occurs where there is a balance between all three knowledge areas. All three of these sets of knowledge influence each other. Each is important, and effective learning environments need to consider all three elements and the balance of each of them. So, helping teachers establish and maintain this balance is the priority of the technology integrator. And with this in mind, TIs sit down with the curriculum coordinators, as you see here in this picture to the right, and first identify the learning outcomes, the content, as well as how students are learning the content, the pedagogy. And then finally, they collaborate on incorporating technologies that'll support the activity to aid students in learning. At this time, I want to move from the higher level to provide Sarah Bros an opportunity to give you more specific examples of how this process is put into action.
Hi, good evening. Oh, all these water bottles. My name is Sarah Bros. I'm the ELA Coordinator, English Language Arts at Saks Middle School. I'm excited to be here tonight to share with you a unit of study and the process in which we go through. I'm first going to look behind me and introduce some of my esteemed colleagues, who are here solely on the promise that they won't have to answer any questions. Dr. Walker, Lauren Kra, Mrs. Kra, and Mrs. Saib are our eighth-grade ELA teachers. Mrs. Mangino was, unfortunately, had a prior commitment and wasn't able to be here tonight, but she's watching the video tomorrow. I also wanted to just recognize Dr. Ferreira, who oversees the ELA department, and Mr. Gusich, who are here on behalf of the Saks administration. So, thank you very much. Like Mr. Salvastrelli mentioned, the goal of technology is to leverage the digital experience in order to create deep, authentic learning. We were so fortunate last year in English Language Arts and Social Studies to receive full sets of Chromebooks for our classrooms, so we thought it would be helpful to show you the process of how we go about integrating the digital tools into our units of study. In doing so, I will outline for you the process of unpacking the ELA skills and standards in a typical unit of study. I'll showcase the great work expected of our eighth graders by celebrating the work of three of our students, and then I'll describe the professional learning process that is in place that leads up to that final product. Though we're looking closely at an ELA eighth-grade unit of study, this process is mirrored in all content areas through all of the grades. We could just as easily be sitting here sharing a social studies or science unit or one from a different grade. We chose eighth grade as the natural transition point, as the work scaffolds and spirals through the grades with a goal toward independence for our high school. Our curriculum is aligned to skills and strategies for students to be independent and thoughtful readers and writers. This particular unit of study, called Communicating Multiple Perspectives, is a research-focused unit that builds upon the skills from kindergarten through seventh grade in order to read and research multiple perspectives and structures about an event in history. Today's world is not just print-rich, it's also diagram-rich, it's feature-rich, and our nonfiction text features and structures support learning to help us understand a topic. In this research study, students choose an event of interest, and they examine bias and perspective in order to communicate their deep understanding of that event. By the end of this unit, students will communicate those research findings in two ways. One, a written article using various text features and structures. And I wanted to pull a Glenda Green here. Look at this. Got some examples of what that might look like. Right? Big shoes to fill. And two, a multimedia site, where the students will explore the multiple perspectives on a selected topic and share it with an eighth grade, another eighth-grade team. So, there's an authentic audience. We're going to listen in to one of our eighth graders talk about the process of research and gathering of details to create meaning.
So, I believe that research is a recursive process, which means that as you find more information through databases or photographs or images, you will find more information and more questions that will lead to even more of those. Now, I believe that using multiple genres and perspectives, such as I have looked through databases and articles, photographs, and videos, this can help me through the writing process, because I can see how a visual representation can affect my understanding of D-Day, which is the topic that I chose. Now, going through a video will actually give live footage, which can also be very helpful with that visual aspect. However, when I read more an article or a database that has been collected from maybe an online encyclopedia, that will give me more factual information that can help more through my writing, because I have seen how someone else has taken an event and put it into their writing, and then maybe I can change it to go through mine.
Eighth grade. That was a first take. I have the blooper reel to prove it. I promise she wasn't coached. But I will say, after listening to these two students talk, I did make a solid convincing argument for them to present tonight. Through the research process, students wonder, investigate, synthesize, express, and reflect. They use digital tools to gather information, record information, or take notes, receive feedback collaboratively and digitally, and express their understanding. Here, you'll hear Lucas reflecting on a digital note-taking process that we encourage students to try in order to organize their thinking and categorize their citations and new ideas.
We use Noodle Tools for our citations, and Noodle Tools, I think I enjoy using it a lot. It's basically like the old, what's it called? The, yeah, EasyBib. And it allows you to cite. And so, I did a bunch of note cards on that. So, what I did was I took citations from websites or wrote down some stuff, and then I could organize my note cards into an outline, and by that, I could write my article very easily. And I could cite all my images and all my stuff on Noodle Tools. And when I had my outline done, all I had to do is kind of fill in the gaps, because I kind of structured my piece already. So, that was, it worked out very well for me.
So, you could see Lucas dragging some of those cards over. Those were note cards, where he was taking his notes digitally, and then he was taking those notes into an outline format to help him to organize out his essay. You can also hear him talking about the choices that he made and the way that the digital note cards have helped him to organize his thinking and his writing. We believe that providing student choice and authenticity in these structured environments build engagement and excitement, and you can see from these student interviews that the choices that the students are making are complex and they're intentional in order to create meaning and communicate that meaning to others. All right. This is where...
No. Two.
I was like, you had music.
Save by the bell?
I've been on vacation.
It's a new phone. It's a new ring.
Thank you, Sharon. That's great. I do have music later. Here are a few examples of student work in the research-writing format to communicate their research for their purpose. So, you can see that these are just a couple of examples of their articles, where they've taken their outline and their notes, and they've put them into the writing format. Now, I'd like you to take a minute and imagine or think about a website that you visit on a normal basis to learn something new. Think, it could be Saks website. Maybe it's Yahoo News, an eighth-grade favorite. You might visit the Wall Street Journal or another news site. As you imagine that site and you're trying to gather information, think about what engages you. How do you make meaning of the information on that site? What holds your attention? Our digital information world is filled with text features to support your comprehension and build background knowledge. We refer to infographics, timelines, maps, charts, and those help us make meaning of rich, dense text filled with facts and details. Students not only need to gather information from these tools to broaden their perspective and understand from a different lens, but using these tools strategically, they also need to make intentional choices to communicate as an author of information text themselves. After students have finished these written articles, students bring their writing into a digital platform just like that. Considering their audience, which in this case is their peers, students create engaging digital presentations to communicate their research and teach others about their topic of choice. Here, they make those choices about the types of text features that best support comprehension for an audience. They design their format and their presentation to match the tone of their topic, and they create interactive platforms to communicate their thinking. Students choose their communication platform, in this particular example, of Google Sites or Adobe Sparks, and they make choices about the types of features and structures that they would embed into their presentation to help give meaning to their research. We're going to listen in to two students discuss the choices that they make. Both of these happen to be Google Sites.
I have chosen a Google Site as my medium to portray all of the information that I have concluded from my investigation. Now, in my introduction, for example, I didn't include much background information about D-Day, assuming that the audience might know about it. Now, even though they did, some people may not. So, I decided that one of my choices would be to include more of that background knowledge, so before the audience jumps into my site, they can know a little bit about it. Another choice that I made was, for example, I wanted to space out my writing, so I would have a little bit of my research with all of the investigational information that I had gathered, and then I would have an image after that to support what I had just taught you. I also had a little bit of a caption to explain how my picture connected back to the article. In addition, I wanted to include a video, because I wanted to show that through my research, there has been a lot of live footage, and for example, in D-Day, Eisenhower gave a fabulous speech that really supported and gave optimistic opinions to the Allies. I thought that this was such an essential piece to put into my site, that I actually linked the video itself. And I think this was a great choice that I made, so when the audience goes through my site, they can really see that Eisenhower was the one giving the speech himself.
Through this research project, I have learned about the importance of text features and how it can help make a piece, enhance it, and make it more visually appealing, and it can also help the readers understand what you are talking about. So, within my site, I included certain images, which I believed would help the readers understand my topic, and they also made it more visually appearing to those who were reading it. I also included other features, such as a drop caption to emphasize a certain point which is made and show an expert's perspective on the situation. And in my site, I have also linked certain sources back to the citations page to make it more easy for the viewers and the readers to understand where I got my information
Here, you can see evidence of speaking, listening, writing, and reading standards that are clearly visible as students practice research, writing, and presentation skills. Additionally, the ICT standard, Creative Communication, which is based on choices students make to clearly and effectively design and communicate through a presentation, lives in this 21st-century communication platform. This type of presentation extends beyond the traditional stand-and-deliver PowerPoint, which I'm giving you right now, and requires students to think deeply about the intentional choices that they make to showcase their research. Our students are digital natives. They've been using media capably for years. They come to us with a comfortability and ability to navigate platforms at a faster rate that sometimes we can even keep up. My five-year-old, Jackson, just helped me navigate Netflix the other day, and my eight-year-old daughter mixed up a song using Quaver, a digital platform that makes music. We know that our students come to us with agency of technology, but our goal isn't to throw those flashy tools in front of the students and see what they can do. Our goal is to help guide the students to understand the complex digital world around them and be able to communicate effectively within it. Our teachers are not just using technology to use it, but instead, they're thoughtfully integrating the tools into each of their units of study. But it's hard work. A collaborative culture must exist for these structures to work, and the teams work together every step of the way. Our revision of this end product began in February of last year, where we studied the standards and analyzed our unit of study in professional learning conversations. The teachers came together in the summer to look closely at the skills and concepts within the unit of study and create the resources to model and teach toward that standard. Starting as early as October, I met with Mr. Salvastrelli, Mrs. Pacelli, and Mr. Petracopoulos, sorry, my little cheechy of name is on the other page, to leverage points of integration and unpack the ELA and ICT standards. Coordinators work to vertically align skills and strategies and support the teachers with the understanding, skills, and concepts to be developed. Teachers work together to share best practices, study student data, and student work to make those instructional decisions, and create the learning environment that needs to be in place to provide the differentiation in student choice. And they must also learn the tools. TIs worked around the clock to create resources. This year, Mr. P. and Ms. Pacelli created differentiated how-to videos for students and teachers, and they've made themselves available to pull small groups of students to work directly with them, answer questions for teachers, and co-teach classes whenever necessary. They are the masterminds behind the bank of resources available to our students. And finally, teachers present these choices to the students through models, explicit instruction, and an inquiry-based approach. Students share their presentations with an authentic audience of their peers, and when all is said and done, we all sit down, meet to calibrate, reflect, and share, and then the process begins again. One question that we asked ourselves and that we continue to study is the use of digital screen time that students have throughout the day. As you can see, this project contains a number of opportunities for students to interact with digital mediums through research, collaboration, teacher feedback, and communication platforms. In order to better understand a student's experience, we followed three of our students throughout the day. Here's a quick snapshot of these three different students that you've heard from already in each period on one random day. of study. Our teachers at all levels and across all content areas are doing the same type of thinking and walking through these same processes in order to be sure that we're meeting the skills and concepts of the students. We're trying to balance the screen time across the day, and we're engaging students in innovative practices that amplify teaching and learning. We are so grateful to be in a district that values the kind of collaborative cultures that support teaching and learning. We thank you for your ongoing support and look forward to sharing the student's success with you through your children's engagement, excitement, and deep learning. Thank you.
We just wanted to share a few. Which way do I go? Sorry.
Anyway, we'd like to share with you a little bit about how the efforts are mutually supported across areas. And one of the ways that some of this is supported is through our work in digital citizenship. As you've heard in prior presentations, our digital citizenship curriculum spans grades five through eight. In grade five, all core teachers share in lesson delivery, and in grades six through eight, these lessons are facilitated by social studies teachers during the workshop period. They support and complement work that's done across all subjects. For example, work that directly supports some of the ELA work that Mrs. Sarah Bross outlined today include lessons on helping students understand and engage in positive, safe, legal, and ethical behavior when using technology. In addition, there are lessons that help students learn how to better understand how to use and share intellectual property. So lessons are skill-based, discussions are rich, and they're geared to help our students not only consider how these concepts and skills might be applied in their work and lives, but also practice these skills and hone them. So work in social studies and language arts, which has already been alluded to, is mutually supportive. It's a fluid process which includes continual conversations between the subjects and disciplines. We meet as coordinators and as cross-disciplinary teams to discuss standards such as the reading, writing, speaking, listening, the research standards that we've already seen, also live in social studies as well. We consider alignment between subject areas, ensuring our students have cohesive language, expectations, and experiences. So the gift of technology to the social studies department has allowed our young citizen historians increased access to the databases you've heard about already, resources such as the Library of Congress, National Archives, to further their inquiry into events of the past and present, and allow them to experience history in the words and actions of people who made it or are making it. It also allows them access to electronic mapping and graphing tools that help students represent and analyze the spatial patterns of different environmental and cultural characteristics in the countries and regions of study. For example, our young geographers and economists now have access beyond traditional maps and atlases to geospatial technologies. Mapping tools such as Global Information Systems, or GIS, that you might have heard of, help our students create geographic representations of data sets and visualize this data. This allows our students to connect subjects such as geography and economics, or history and geography, to draw patterns and to better understand their world and to work more deeply.
The science department uses technology in similar ways to the ELA and the social studies department. Over the years, your budget has been able to supply the science department with a mixed platform of devices, from iPads to Chromebooks to laptops and to other devices as well. And that's in order for us to meet the various needs of technology within the science curriculum itself. We also have some unique approaches and applications of these, just for the science as well. And this first approach that you see on the screen talks about how our young scientists use technology to see the unseen. So students consider what lurks in the water or in the air around you, what affects what we can't see have on the health of a system. So we currently use a variety of veneer probes, which you'll see in the lower left-hand photograph, to measure pH and salinity, dissolved oxygen, soil moisture, and a variety of other abiotic factors. And students design systems, such as the one in the bottom middle, which is in an aquarium, to measure and see the sustainability of their system. And they measure the unseen parts of their environment to see if that system is going to fail or crash, or if it's going to be healthy and be able to survive over time. We look forward to expanding our ability by engaging and purchasing additional veneer probes that will help us to measure additional abiotic factors. And we're also looking at some microscopic imagery materials as well. Another use of technology are models. There are many satellites and geo-monitoring stations positioned all around the globe, and they collect huge amounts of data every second of the day. So how can you make sense of these large data sets? In the past, we extracted smaller data sets, graphed them, and designed a story that will tell what's happening at that point in time. But now scientists use data visualizations that Mary Hannah just mentioned to build models that students can use to manipulate -- and here you can see in the upper right-hand corner, real-time data -- when we captured it, it was real-time -- of earthquake and volcanoes. You may be familiar with some of these real-time data models, such as the National Canadian-European Weather Models. So when you're trying to predict those weather forecasts and you see all these various models, why are there so many? How are we using them? So these models, simulations, determine what might happen if only a slight change happens to our variable. So if there is a water current that slows down or is redirected, what then happens to that storm? And that's why we have so many different models. In the future, we're looking for ways for our students to contribute to those large data sets and become what is called a citizen scientist. Our students can also be seen manipulating time and dimension. And it sounds really exciting, and it really is. Our students love the slow-mo apps that are on their iPads. They also are able to manipulate the videos, so you can kind of slow them all down. And they can be seen on the floor capturing the impact of a ball right at the moment it strikes the floor. So that smushing moment, when you see that boundary of the ball right into the floor, is important for them because that's evidence of how energy is transferred or transformed in that moment. And they can translate that to other balls, and they can talk about the energy and where it goes, and when is it potential, and when is it kinetic. So that screenshot is so important to them. We can also speed up time. So we do that through our simulations. So there are times when you might want to see something that happens over years or happens over days, but we can't do that in a 45-minute period. So if we want to look at how a genetic mutation affects a species over time, we're able to set the mutation and let it run for as many years as we want and see what happens in 45 minutes. Same thing can happen to plant growth. So if we're looking at changing a variable for a larger amount of water, we can set it, grow it multiple times, generating it within 45 minutes. So in the future, we're looking to augment reality, which will allow us to change the dimensions. It'll allow us to use equipment and some materials that we can't typically use within the science classroom. It will allow us to even remove gravity and see what might happen if we're looking at life on a different planet. Or we can remove friction on surfaces if you want to see how motion is affected by different forces. So those are a couple of different ways of how we're currently using it and where we're looking to go within technology with science. And some of this is paralleled within the mathematics. So I'd like to welcome Mrs. Robinson.
So similar to science and the other content areas, we also have great opportunities available to our students in math. Math isn't just about computing for an answer, but it's really about problem-solving in the real world and where we use mathematics every day. As we look at technology through the lens of math, we want to have assured experiences for our students in all of the gray levels. Our students have started to use tools such as Desmos and GeoGebra, and we even hope to begin to use some augmented reality. As you can see in the picture on the right, two teachers, our math specialist and a sixth-grade teacher, had the privilege of going to NCTM this year, where they really got to learn about ways to use technology to enhance the learning, what can't paper and pencil provide us in our experiences that technology can. In addition, we are talking about how do we give these experiences where students are looking at math in different ways. Last week, we were doing a lesson with the use of Desmos applications. This lesson was implemented in grades six through eight, and it allowed for real-time manipulations of graphing and understanding how we can use this learning to make predictions, problem-solve, and identify outcomes. They were using online plotting system to find the slope of objects, and students were really engaged because we asked them to take pictures, whether at home or at school, to find positive slopes, negative slopes. And what they ended up doing was really incredible. As you can see on the bottom, the boy in the middle actually took a picture of his hockey stick during a swing to see how high his puck would go. And he had to put in the slope intercept form, which we all know is y equals mx plus b, of course. And they had to input their variables, and they got to see in real time if their prediction was accurate, was it off? How did they have to change their variables to see if the slope was correct? As some of the students began to struggle and they really had to persevere through the task, I went over and asked the student, "Can I help you?" And he said, "No, no, 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 no." And then he looked up and said, "I mean, no, thank you." But it was fabulous. I loved being told no because they really wanted to problem-solve. They were really engaged in trying to find out, why was his answer wrong? You start to see the rich discussion in the classroom where they started working with other students to really problem-solve. And what we realized is, the ability to use technology in this instance wasn't just about taking a pencil to plot points in the four quadrants, but it was really about, if I plot this line and I'm wrong, why am I wrong? How do I need to shift my thinking? What does the application show me? Do I need to change over to the left? Do I need to change over to the right? Does my variable increase or decrease? Which really allowed for rich discussions. As we move forward through mathematics, we want to ensure we're preparing students for the next generation of math learning, and we want to make sure that we give them exposure to math tools that will prepare them as they move into the high school. We want to make sure that we set them up for success of what the real-life opportunities will be, such as architecture and other opportunities in their learning. So we want to thank you for your continued support, and we're looking forward to continuing working with you, as we're looking for new ways to incorporate technology in our mathematics classroom.
Thank you. It's absolutely amazing. Any questions? Sherry?
Not a question. I just have to say, I thought this was an amazing presentation, and you did such a fantastic job of bringing this to life. And each of your passion for how technology is amplifying the learning is so compelling. I'm just so grateful that our students have you integrating technology in such a thoughtful way. I mean, it's just, this was amazing. So thank you.
Deanna?
Again, it's not a question, but just to kind of follow on to what Sherry said. So it is amazing, and I think it's also amazing to see that day in the life, because, you know, we do get a lot of parent feedback worrying about the amount of time our students are spending on technology. And as I look through that day in the life, you really see that it is just extending the learning. It isn't replacing or, you know, it -- so thank you for that. I think, you know, it would be great to have parents being directed toward that because I think it's an important piece that you brought into the presentation. So thank you.
I mean, just one other comment I'd make is, a lot of the things that I saw in the presentation were things that, you know, we as professionals deal with every day. And, you know, the students really need to learn, and they're learning stuff when they're in, you know, excuse me, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, which is just amazing to me that, you know, they can put together an entire website with links. It's remarkable. So I'm glad that they're learning it now. Yeah, Hazel?
Thank you for bringing all of those subjects to life, such life as we watch the students and you look at their faces and you can see that they're enthralled with it, looking at it, exchanging information with the person sitting near them, and to see that is really terrific. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you very much. So next is the Learning Management System Pilot Program.
Yes, I thought --
I'm not going anywhere.
While Mr. Salvastrelli was here, I thought we'd -- yeah, we'll say thank you to --
Thank you all.
-- all of our teachers and staff who came out tonight. Thank you so much. While Mr. Salvastrelli was here, he gives a brief update on where we are with the LMS pilot. As you know, we just got it off the ground in the last couple of days, really, but since Matt's going to be here, let's get a quick update and see if you had any questions about it so far.
Absolutely. So like Dr. Lutz just said, I really just wanted to provide you with an update. Since the fall, we've been working to make sure that the pilot experience is up and ready, and we want to ensure that the staff has an authentic opportunity to really test out the platform, okay? And also, in doing so, to give us a chance to gather useful information that we can use to have a conversation about next steps. Okay? So where are we now? So right now, we put together a team of teachers that reflect a strong cross-section of teachers and staff in new Canadian public schools. We've connected with Schooligi so that we can leverage our existing technology and resources to be a part of the experience. So it's not just testing Schooligi out in a vacuum, but also making sure that it works well with what we already have in place. And we also prepared the pilot and support staff through several different training sessions. So who's piloting the program? This slide shows you where we have teachers piloting Schooligi. You'll see that we have a wide range of content areas and the involvement of instructional leaders as well. So instructional leaders are utilizing the platform to create groups of teachers so they can share out instructional information, have professional conversations, and teachers, as you can see here, are using it at each and every, each level K-12. So on January 7th, we brought to get in a trainer from Schooligi to provide our teachers with the training they'd need to begin the test pilot program. Over the course of two, three-hour sessions, the trainer guided teachers in areas such as course creation, setting up and organizing the tools that you need to have within a course so that students can access them in a clear and logical manner, incorporating elements that teachers want to and have already been using in a variety of different ways, such as videos, providing student feedback, and utilizing rubrics. He trained them on how to leverage the resources that teachers already have within Google. How do we incorporate that? We had several teachers that are in our pilot program who have used Moodle in the past. They wanted to see, since they invested so much time in creating, utilizing that platform, whether the information could be migrated over, and if so, what it would look like. And it was very successfully moved over, and they were quite pleased and impressed with how it was taken, moved over from Moodle into Schooligi seamlessly. Other training topics were communicating with students and colleagues utilizing Schooligi and organizing instructional resources that can be shared with a variety of groups. In addition to this day training session, technology integrators receive further training so they can act as in-house instructional support for the teachers that engage in the At the end of the session, the feedback from participants was universally positive. What you see here are some quotes that teachers shared in their reflection exit ticket, okay? They walked out. We were very impressed with how excited they were to actually get their hands on the platform, and they were just excited to see the wealth of opportunities that they could leverage and utilize to create really rich learning courses for students. So before I talk about next steps, I just wanted to share some pictures on the right. Just last Friday, I happened to be at one of the elementary schools at a tech team meeting. And in that tech team meeting, there's one teacher who is piloting Schooligi, and she couldn't stop raving about how impressed she was with the platform. I happened to be able to go into her classroom, and the picture is down below. You'll see students actually in Schooligi, okay, but also accessing Google Docs, which they've accessed before, but also with support provided to them and in further instruction within the Schooligi Learning Management System. They were working seamlessly. This is a teacher that -- and they really have only had, as Dr. Lutz said, a few weeks, a week or so, really, to have an opportunity to get into this. So I was so impressed to see students, fourth graders, working with this so quickly. So next steps really are to have teachers give them time to actually get into this pilot, give them three months to create their courses, to deliver their instruction, to gather feedback, communicate with students, and gather information that we can use. And to that end, on February 15th, we're going to take some time at our professional learning session, bring the individuals that are piloting back together, get some feedback, have some conversations about what they feel is going well, talk about, identify where they may need some further support, and then also talk about what our plans are to continue to gather information as we move towards the end, the second half of that pilot, the end of the pilot. And at the end, we'll gather feedback from students and staff and make some decisions about what are our next steps. We're going to utilize some information that we had gathered when we first looked into, what do we expect, what do we want a learning management system to do? That really was, we used that at the very beginning of the process, and we'll bring that back together and take a look at that based on the feedback we get from staff and students.
Thank you. Questions? I just had one question, which is, in the migration from Moodle or Google, is that something that a teacher could do on his or her own? Or is that something where, you know, they would need technology integrator support or SchoolEg support?
We're fortunate enough to have some high-level Moodle users. And so those were people that were there at that training session. They're people that are involved in the pilot. And again, we're working off of that train-the-trainers model. So the idea really is to make sure that we have those teacher experts as well as technology integrators to support the teachers if they need it.
Okay.
But it doesn't require any unique level of expertise to be able to make that migration.
Right. Good. Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
We'll keep you posted as the pilot continues.
Great.
Next is comments from the public. Seeing no one? Move on to announcements and future business. Dr. Luxy?
Sure. Just one or two brief announcements. There's been quite a bit of conversation in town and statewide about some of the legislative proposals in this new session. One that's gotten quite a bit of attention is, actually two that have, are to sort of force regionalization bills. There's one on the floor that talks about forcing regionalization in communities fewer than 40,000 residents. There's another that was proposed that forces regionalization for school districts with less than 2,000 students. So while certainly longer conversations can be had about this, I just, and the board had a quick update the other day, I just wanted to share one or two pieces of feedback around that because as we look at these proposals, and they're simply proposals at this point, it looks again that the legislation is looking to use policy as a blunt instrument in the state. While there may certainly be some areas that it could be beneficial, looking at the bills and thinking about our district and the region, certainly I do not think it'd be beneficial for our students, for our schools, or for our community. So where superintendents throughout the state are working very, very hard to identify areas of effectiveness and efficiency, this sweeping bill that would mandate wholesale regionalization certainly appears to discredit and undermine those efforts that are ongoing and really have been very, very successful locally. Furthermore, a foundational value of Connecticut education system is the importance of local voice and local control in educational decision-making. And forcing regionalization certainly seems to ignore that foundational value of our state and to create a situation where districts may have to work against their own best interest because they would have to comply to this forced regionalization. So there's certainly some more conversation to be had about this. There's some ways to learn more. But just wanted to share a couple of quick thoughts about this and to let you know that there is a town hall on Wednesday night at 8:00 that is about these bills. And I know that some of our local representatives will be attending that. And also to let you know that superintendents are talking together about this. As a member of the CAPS Board and a member of the CAPS Legislative Committee, we've talked about this at length, and certainly it is universal feeling that mandating regionalization or mandating any such action that would fundamentally remake school districts is really antithetical to the values and beliefs that guide Connecticut school systems. And I would go so far to say Connecticut schools are some of the best in the country. And I think that certainly the system that we have in place contributes to that success. So these types of proposals, while they cause a lot of consternation initially, my feedback at this point certainly has been that there's not a lot of support beyond some pockets for something like this. But certainly glad to talk about it more. Also, just to briefly mention that tomorrow night, we have a Board of Finance meeting where I'll be presenting the Board of Education's budget to the Board of Finance, and we'll be prepared to answer any questions, talking about our operating and our capital budget. Again, the Board of Ed's operating budget is at 2.03% overall and a 1.90% without benefits, which is a very conservative, very carefully structured and developed budget. And I will be certainly proud to represent that tomorrow night with the Board of Finance. And there we have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is to adjourn to executive session in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 1-2006. The subject is personnel matters. You have a motion? Penny, second? Deanna? All of us in favor? Great. Thank you.
Great. Thanks.